Jimmy Halbert, how are you?
I'm doing good. Thank you so much for having me in this morning. I'm excited to be here.
Listen, thank you for making the time. I screwed up our thing. So we're like, kind of rushed getting going here. I screwed up locations, but we made it happen. We're going to take advantage of time. God bless it. Listen, you are existing city council, correct?
That's correct. I'm actually in my second term, so I'm up for reelection in my third term on Boise City Council.
Okay, look, let's just start with the basics here. Why are you doing this to yourself? Like, what a brutalizing job.
You know, you might call it brutalizing. I think it's truly a privilege and it's truly an honor to serve the community. My kind of roots are in the nonprofit sector. I started the Boise Bicycle Project when I was 25 years old, this local nonprofit. I ran it for 16 years. And one of the things that I learned in the nonprofit sector is that you cannot be an expert at everything, but you have to know who the experts are. And so the great part about being on city council is that I know these nonprofit leaders. I know these leaders in the community. I know the people who are affected by these issues the most. And I get the privilege of helping bring their voices to the table. And so yes, it can be brutal. Yes, it is a lot of work. But it is such an honor because we can come up with solutions to complex problems. And to be able to be part of that and to be part of coming up with solutions during a time that's so divisive and so complicated is a really great place to be.
That's a, that's a pretty bold task, coming up with solutions when things are divisive. Boise has been and continues to be the center of state focus, which is so curious to me, right? That I was introduced in the legislative session that laws are almost intentionally written to affect predominantly like Boise and whatever other city accidentally happens to be a population threshold match. And that's a unique thing, right? It's like, why, why do you think that happens with the city of Boise?
Well, people often view Boise as this sort of progressive dot in a conservative state. And I actually kind of push against that a little bit. We have a history in Idaho of advocating for public lands, of advocating for each other, standing up. We are a state where when somebody breaks down on the side of the road, somebody stops by and helps them out. We are always helping out our neighbor. And I think unfortunately, the divisiveness that we see at a national level gets pulled into some of these state politics. And so you have a state that is more conservative, pushing against the city that it's more progressive. But if you actually looked at the things that the city of Boise was doing and other cities of our side, you would see that these are not actually political issues at all. These are practical issues that every single city is facing. And we're trying to come up with solutions. And unfortunately, the politics get in the way of those solutions. And that's one of the things that I enjoy so much about being in there, being part of city council, is that we can take some of that away. We can take some of that divisiveness away. We can put forward solutions. And we can let the people kind of comment on it. And I think that what you'll find is that the people in Boise really like what we're doing.
When you talk about what the city of Boise does, right, there is a misconception about the amount of control that cities specifically in Idaho, because of the nature of taxing districts and whatnot. There's a misconception about what the city actually has control over. Like you guys don't run hospitals, correct?
Correct.
You don't run schools. We have the school district.
Districts, yeah.
Right. You don't, you don't run roads aside from like two blocks.
We're actually one of the only major metropolitan areas in the entire country that does not own and manage its own streets. So we have a county highway district, ACHD, that does that. We are an anomaly. There is no other major metropolitan area in the country that doesn't actually run and control its own roads. So people may think that the city of Boise does, and we certainly have a role to play there, but no, we're not the ones managing that.
That leaves real key things, right? We have a police department, or you rather, you have a police department, you have a fire department. You guys do run your own fire department, right? You're not a fire district?
Nope, we have our own fire department. And I actually like that you say we, because these departments, they serve the community. We're ingrained in the community and the community has to see themselves as a part of the team at the city of Boise. So yeah, we have a fire department. We've got a police department. We've got public works. We've got parks. We've got IT, all the things you would normally need to get all these different things going. And then planning and development services that actually approve the developments that are happening around town, finance departments. But it really is the practical things that it takes to run an organization and to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our local community here.
Your public works, by the way, I recently had the director on Steve Burgos.
Steve Burgos, yeah.
Fantastic. Blown my mind. And we were just talking about the wastewater stream or, you know, input stream that he gets and then repurposes the wastewater, like direct human waste, repurposes it into fertilizers and all kinds of other things. And water, of course, this is hilarious thing. I've been trying to figure out what he, what they're going to do with that. I think they do something like 30 million gallons a day of water that gets clean and put back into the Boise River. And clean, 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 going into the Boise River. They're not adding, you know, phosphates that contributing to major problems. But the question is, if they start, if they increase the, the cleaning capacity and they start turning that water that would otherwise go into the Boise River into things that, for instance, industry can use like Micron.
Yep.
Is there going to be a fight over the refused reused recycled water? Because like, who now owns that water? Because it turns out to be something like 30,000 acre feet a year. That's an astronomical amount of water.
Yeah, well, water is always going to be an issue. I think people forget because we are the city of trees, that we are in a desert. And water resources are limited. And so we have to be doing everything we can in our public works department as cities, not just Boise, but all the other cities as well, to figuring out where we can recycle water. So can we recycle it for industrial use? Can we get it to the point where we can expand, you know, those types of things? But water is always going to be one of the things, the great things that you were talking about with Micron is that a lot of the water that they're using, they've got their own treatment plant that our public works team has been working on them with. And it just gets recycled back into the system over and over and over again. So we have to be coming up with those solutions. And luckily, I would say that Steve Burgos is probably one of the best public work directors in the country. We have him right here in Boise. We have one of the best public works teams. And so that's kind of the nice part about being a large city is that a lot of our smaller cities in Idaho don't have these same resources, these same expertise, these same size of departments. So the stuff that we're doing at the city of Boise, which is truly innovative across the country, other cities are adopting them. But even here locally, people are saying, okay, what is it that Boise is doing? And cities like Twin Falls, cities like Meridian are watching, they're learning, and we're solving these issues together. So Boise actually, even though we do sometimes get attacked from the state, we're also sort of like this creative solution finder that every other growing city in Boise, in Idaho, is looking at to come up with solutions to problems. And our public works department is leading the way.
You know, Neil deGrasse Tyson, the scientist, was on, being interviewed a couple of years back, I remember, and listening to him. And the question came up, what, what does government do well? And he had an articulation that I had never heard, which is government is good at taking on projects that have an unknown cost and an unknown benefit. Like, what good is that? He's like, well, NASA, you know, and again, as you're articulating, look, if you live in a smaller municipality, you may not have the opportunity to take a shot on a public works water reuse system, even though you may need it. And Boise does have the opportunity to do that and has been forward thinking with things of that nature for some time. And that allows people to get a ground, like kind of a framework of, okay, they're treating this much. This is their cost. Is, is this something that we could apply to our area? So in that way, Boise really does lead the state with innovation of the nuts and bolts of like, okay, we need to supply, you know, again, these, these fundamental things to our community.
Across all sorts of different issues too. So like, we're talking about public works now, but you could extend the same conversation to parks and fire. You could say, okay, the city of Boise has this 10 minute walk to a park goal, which we're the only city, you know, in Idaho that has this. And if other cities are saying, where should we be building these parks? Where should we be putting these resources? They have policies that they can look at at the city of Boise and they could say, this would work in our city as well. And so I think that that's one of the things that I love because I, you know, I grew up in Boise on the western edge on, I call it old highway 55, but it's Horseshoe Ben Road. I grew up over there and then I spent time growing up on a farm in Eagle and then have family in Cascade and some other areas. And a lot of the issues that we have in Boise, they're the same issues that are happening in every other city. And as other cities grow and they face these complex issues, they want to find these solutions to the problems and they want practical solutions. And they do, they look at the city of Boise, they look at what we're doing and they adopt some of those things. And so what we're doing, we really are doing in partnership with the rest of our neighbors. People don't always know where the Garden City line is, where Meridian starts and Boise finishes, where Eagle starts. We have to be working together with these neighboring communities to address these issues. Because whether it's transportation or housing or water shortage or pathways, they affect every one of us. And we have opportunities to work together to solve all those issues together.
Talk to me about transportation, because transportation within the city of Boise and to and from the city of Boise is a really hot topic right now. And some people are arguing for a local option tax. And I believe, does Meridian have a local option tax?
No, I think the only cities that have them are actually like, are kind of more recreational resort cities. You can think of like McCall, Sun Valley.
Right. And that, again, the, the concept of a local option tax is that you collect the, people have to agree to it first off. And then you collect money with a stated goal. And then once the money is collected, then you go back to the people and say, okay, we've collected a hundred bucks. We would again, like to use it in this way, or we have collected it and we actually, instead of using it with A, we would like to use it to B. Does everybody agree? And then everybody has to agree, like, yeah, let's use it with B. And then you go forward. But essentially it's pooling resources together within a city. People elect to aggregate resources, kind of like a, kind of like an auditorium district and that they're trying to improve these specific things. Transportation is one of those things that people have suggested, hey, if we had a local option tax, we could have a better transportation mechanism throughout the city. There have recently been problems and heartbreaking stories of youth engaging, or excuse me, getting hit by cars and things of that nature. And people argued for public transportation. What do you think about that?
So a couple of different things there. Just like if we're talking about local option tax, I think one of the things to remember is this is sort of letting democracy do its work. Because basically this idea, and let's say it's to fund public transit. And they did this recently up in Sun Valley, Haley area, the Wood River Valley. And so they put in front of people and said, would you be willing to pay some additional taxes on your sales tax in order for us to pub, fund public transportation between these cities? Because they have the same congestion issues, everybody coming in and out of the city every single day. And then the voters actually get to decide. And so I think sometimes people worry about, about a local option tax as far as being this new tax, it's going to be a burden on them. But really, it's, it's a presentation of saying, here's an idea that we have for funding. Here's how we would like to use it. Now let's let the community vote to decide if they want to use that or not. So I think that's one thing that's important to remember about these different funding resources. But when it comes to public transportation, I believe that Idaho is now the only state, the only state in the entire country that does not have a statewide funding mechanism for public transit. Mississippi used to be in that list. I think it was us too. And I think Mississippi recently started funding public transit as well. And so we have.
What does everybody know that we don't know? Talk to me, Jimmy.
Again, like I'll, I'll kind of keep using this idea of practical solutions, but any type of transportation system doesn't really fund itself. And so it needs supportive funding to get it off the ground, to kind of support it. When people are driving their cars, it doesn't pay for the full cost of the roads, you know, to do these things. The gasoline tax doesn't pay for the full cost of actually driving these vehicles. And so we need those statewide funding resources to figure out different solutions to problems. And so what we, because we don't have that funding resource, what we see is that when we have traffic jams on I-84 every single day between Caldwell and Boise, the solution is, let's add an extra lane, you know, to the, to the interstate. And what we know from data is that that actually doesn't work. Because all you're doing is you're, you're increasing the amount of people who are on that road, but you still have the same amount of exits. So that congestion still exists in those same spots. And there's this whole like concept of induced demand that I won't get into. But as you widen the roads, it just encourages more people to drive on, the congestion stays the same. And so really what you want to see as solutions is how can we get more people, more options to get out of single occupancy vehicles? And so you can think of a bus that can fit 20 people in it or 30 people in it, instead of one person driving a car. Or, and this is a conversation that everybody should be talking about, how many people could you fit on regional rail or right, or light rail that would connect these cities and actually reduce the amount of cars that are on the road? But without a funding mechanism to actually allow that to happen, it's very, very difficult for us to do that in Idaho.
Now, interesting thing, I had the CEO of Valley Regional Transit, Elaine Clegg.
Elaine, one of my favorite people.
She, she was an incredible person, incredible conversation. And she was bringing up the conversation of rail, be it light rail or using existing rail lines and just adding on, adding on cars with the system set up. And people instantaneously criticized that position. They're like, it would never pay for itself. And what I found interesting is, you know, understanding this a little bit better, it's like, is your car ever paying for itself? Like if you look at all of the cars going down the freeway, all of those would have little red, you know, negative signs with numbers about like how much this car cost this person. There's no transportation system that's, you know, quote, a winner. Like you're never going to be in the black. So the question is, okay, how can we lose the least money collectively as a community? As like this broad area, geographically, how can we reduce the cost of transportation on average down as low as possible? She was saying something that regarding housing, housing costs coupled with transportation costs. And if you put both of those together, as far as percentages of gross income, Boise turns out to be one of the most expensive and.
Very unaffordable, yeah.
Very unaffordable when you factor in housing and cost of transportation because of how much we have to drive. She's like, look, this is the case, a very clear case for more robust public transit.
And it is linked to housing. You have to think about as the housing costs grow, people who are living in downtown that are working in grocery stores, that are working as teachers, they're working as librarians, they're working as firefighters. They're moving further and further away from where they work. And that means that they're driving through every single community on the way to get there. So it's adding congestion to everywhere. It's taking time out of that person's day and it's increasing their costs. So even though they may be saving some money on housing, they're still now spending a lot more funds on transportation and a lot more of their time. And nobody wants to spend two hours of their day, you know, driving to and from work. I think it's really important when we talk about transportation, that we're not talking about getting rid of single occupancy vehicles or getting rid of driving. The average household takes 10 vehicle trips per day. That's running to the store, dropping the kids off at school, going to work, doing all these things. And the goal with public transportation or bicycle transportation or walkable neighborhoods is that we reduce that average number. So if all of a sudden you took 10 vehicle trips per day and you decreased it to six vehicle trips per day, by giving public transportation options, by making it easier for people to walk and bike, by making sure that when there's development, that there's also commercial, that's going to create a coffee shop or an ice cream place, the places that people want to go. If we can decrease that average vehicle trips per day, that's actually where we have the ability to reduce congestion. So getting it down to six vehicle trips per day, four trips off the board would be a game changer. You would be taking a huge amount of traffic off the road. You'd be making it faster, easier, cheaper for everybody to get where, where they need to go. But there has to be a funding mechanism to make this possible. And so while there are challenges with regional rail, we have to be talking about regional rail. Because if you are driving from Boise to Caldwell or Caldwell to Boise, your trip could take 45 minutes. Or if there is a fender bender, somebody gets a flat tire, if somebody gets pulled over, that trip could take an hour and a half each way. And that's not a predictable way for people to get to where they need to go. You put in regional rail that connects these cities and you've got something that's running like clockwork. It's there at the exact same time, every single day. It drops you off at the exact time, every single day. And if you have that regional rail, then you plug in the bus system to kind of work as laterals off of it. And you can kind of address those last mile problems. So this has to be something that we're talking about. This is something I'm certainly talking about during my campaign, my reelection campaign for city council. But the cities have to be doing everything that we can to be applying for grants, applying for resources, talking about this with state legislators, talking about it with community members, so we can advocate for these different types of funding options. And as the city develops, there's a lot of growth right now. Everybody knows that. We can be making sure that we're protecting easements, that we're building infrastructure. So when we do have this opportunity for rail, it is ready to go. And so that planning really has to start today. In fact, Compass, which is our major metropolitan planning area, they kind of take care of regional planning and make sure all of our cities are working together. They just came out and they said, this is the only solution to the problem. Or this is the most practical solution to the problem. We could add more lanes, but it wouldn't actually make that big of a difference. It would cost almost just as much money. So if we actually want to address this issue, all of their studies say that regional rail, public transit, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods is the best way to get that average vehicle trip per day down from 10 to six or five or whatever it could be. And so we have to be having those conversations to address immediate concern or immediate concerns, but really long term. We have to be thinking about 15 years from now and what the city is going to look like and how people are going to be moving around and start taking those steps today.
On top of everything you've just said, is, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that this conversation around more robust accessible transportation mechanisms ties into the affordability of housing within, within the centralized economic up. Because essentially, the, the more congested and more difficult it is for somebody to get from, let's say Caldwell to Boise to work, the more incentivized they are to live closer to Boise, because they're like, look, I can't, it's like an hour, hour and a half sometimes, whatever it might be. So that brings everybody into a tighter concentration, that drives up cost of housing, that drives up density, that drives up all the things with more people trying to get there. Whereas if you have like, like clockwork, a 25 minute trip where people are like, well, now I don't have to live so close because only 25 minutes is consistent. I know exactly how this is going to work. No problem. I can just live in this other place. And that takes pressure off the density, that takes pressure off. And with that less pressure, you have more affordable options for people to live. And again, then you have people that aren't living in Boise out of necessity because of transportation issues. And you have people that only actually want to live here. And, you know, that's better for everyone.
Yeah. Not only that, it also allows you to make sure that when you are increasing density and increasing development, that you're doing it along major transportation corridors. And one of the most expensive parts of a development is the amount of parking that it has to supply. So if you're providing two car parking spots for every apartment complex or for every house, that parking is incredibly expensive. It's one of the barriers that make it for developers to not make it pencil, you know, when they're trying to build affordable housing. But if you can actually build these developments along these transit corridors where somebody has access to a bus, they have access to regional rail, they have access to a bicycle path, they don't need as many parking spots. And so that's something that we have to be thinking about as well, is that we can reduce the cost of building housing by also reducing some of the parking requirements in those areas, which can be controversial. But if you develop those along transit corridors, you can actually address affordable housing that way as well. So housing and transportation, whenever anybody talk about either one of them, they should be talking about both. Because they're absolutely related. They, they make up a huge portion of what people are spending in their homes. We know that costs are going up for housing. We know that costs are going up for transportation and gas and everything else. But these are two things that if we link them together and if we address them together, we can actually take meaningful steps in bringing some of those costs down.
When we talk about density, a lot of times what people go to instantaneously is like the high rise building. They're like, oh my gosh. And this, the city, I've spoken with Mayor McLean several times. And the city of Boise is doing some very innovative public, private partnerships where a city might have land and it engages in a lease option.
Yeah, affordable housing land trust, yep.
Yeah, attainable. Don't say affordable.
That's the new word.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's the new one. Like we're doing new, new stuff. It's the same thing, right? But that's only a piece of, of density. There are smaller, more residential solutions that people have started bringing up, which are, you know, ADUs. So, you know, say I got a 2,000 square foot house and I have the capacity to build a 500 square foot additional dwelling unit in my backyard because I have plenty of land and it could be used as a grandmother suite, you know, as later in life. It could also be used as somebody just getting started where they're like, look, I'm, you know, just graduated from college, which is frankly, what I did. When I graduated, I didn't want to live in an apartment and I, I didn't want to have roommates. Dude, I ended up renting. No joke. I thought I was king of the castle. I didn't even realize it, but it was somebody's garage that they converted into an apartment. Okay, so it's a two car garage. But half of the garage was their storage. And my bed, you had to climb up a ladder and crawl. They like, so like, I was literally crawling over to my bed, which was on top of the storage thing. And I was like, this is the best thing ever.
For a college kid, we may not want to, you know, encourage that exact thing. It sounds like they're.
I probably wasn't up to code. But the point is, stretching our existing land resources and making, making a financial viability, long-term, you know, rentals, whatever it might be. But instead of just talking about high rises, what can we do for residential individuals who might want to invest and increase density and take advantage of that?
And I think that this is a perfect example of how this is a nonpartisan issue. Because this is actually when we're talking about private property rights, what somebody can do on their own property and do on their own property to help themselves in a financial way, but also to help be part of the solution to problems that we're facing as a community. So we had this old, old zoning code, 60 years old. We just did a total rewrite and now we have our new modern zoning code, this massive public process that we did to get through it that, you know, was approved, it's in place now. And we're just starting to see some of the outcomes of that code. People, sometimes they, you know, they can be a little impatient. I can be one of those impatient people where they're like, you passed this new code, I'm still seeing the exact same thing. And it's like, yeah, that's because those were approved under the old code. And these projects are just starting to get built. What we want to make sure that we see happen is a variety of housing types in every single neighborhood. So the old code was really driving two different types of development. You would see these massive apartment complexes. And then you would see these 4,000 square foot, single family houses. And neither one of those were kind of addressing a lot of those gaps in the middle. So our new modern zoning code really is making it more possible for somebody who owns a lot to subdivide it and maybe get two additional units on there or to put an ADU on there or a new development that's going to happen in the Boise bench or the north end or whatever part of town it may be. Instead of being just one house, we're making it a little bit easier for them to put in three different houses, a triplex in the same spot. And people think that this is this weird radical idea, but it really isn't. You can drive around the bench and you can drive around the north end and you can see all these small little apartment complexes. These are these little duplexes that, you know, I went to college at Boise State University and I lived in a 600 square foot ADU, you know, in the back of somebody's property. Like these things have existed for a long time. We called them mother-in-law quarter back then. But we're, this new zoning code will really help drive that variety of housing types. And then also make sure that when we're building those housing types, that we're addressing things like sidewalk gaps, that we're making it a little bit easier for a small level commercial to get into a neighborhood. You can think of, there was a recent, up on Leita, there's the little commercial development there now. And it's sort of this neighborhood activity center. But creating these coffee shops, these, you know, breweries, these restaurants where people now not only have a development that's in their neighborhood, but also a little coffee shop on the bottom that serves everybody in there, that makes it so they don't have to drive to that coffee shop. And so the new zoning code, you know, really sort of focuses on that variety of housing types, the ability for small commercial and making sure that we're addressing transportation concerns at the same time that a development happens. And so I think that we need to give it a little bit more time. We need to see how it actually plays out. Does the goals that we set for the code actually, are they going to deliver? And we also need to make sure that along the way, we're looking at continuous improvement. What are the small things that we are noticing that we can make some changes along the way? How can we decrease some of the regulatory burdens or some of the problems that people have going through the planning and zoning process? And streamline that, streamline that to make it easier for small developers. Because the large developers, they know how to navigate the process. But like a mom and pop who's trying to, you know, add a couple more ADUs behind their house or subdivide a property, a lot more difficult. And so we can always figure out ways to streamline that process and make it easier. And again, this is not a, this is not a political issue. This is saying, you own your property. You have the ability to develop on that property and to contribute to the community through housing. And, you know, something that may be more affordable than building something huge. And it also makes it so that we're solving problems together. One of the things that I really try to talk about a lot, you know, during, you know, anything that I do, whether it's campaigning or as we're working on stuff, we have to be solving these problems together. And Boise has smart people, you know, people, you know, pull themselves up, they get together. When somebody's struggling, they help that person out. And when we face these huge issues that are sometimes associated with growth, transportation and housing, everybody has to be able to be part of the solution and they have to feel like they're on that team and figuring out what they can do to the, to be a part of that. And so these ADUs, these splitting the house that maybe is a single family house into two different entrances. You know, these are all things that we can be working on together and everybody has to be part of the solution. And we need leaders at the city who are driving people apart or driving people together, instead of driving people apart to address these issues.
Appreciate that. Switching gears somewhat, when you were talking about additional, you know, as we're talking about increasing density, my mind goes straight to like, well, you don't want it to become New York with like people, you know, crime and whatnot with so many people here. Talking of law and speaking of law enforcement, they're really too big. So first off, you know, obviously there was a, there was a, an issue with the, the police union that it appears is, is being resolved. And awesome. Congratulations. Great.
People got together. I think we got that one taken care of.
Right, right.
And we learned some lessons along the way. And I think that's one of the things that we have to do is when we have issues, when something doesn't go smoothly, we have to take a step back and say, okay, what happened there? How can we make this a better process in the future? I used to fight fires on a wildland crew on the Idaho City Hotshots. And after every single fire, you do an after action review. And you talk about what went well, what didn't go well, what changes we can make. And I think that the city and the police union arrived in a really good spot. And now I think we have this tremendous opportunity to go back and say, how, how can we make this smoother in the future? But yeah, absolutely.
Gotcha. Two other big issues that, that people have started bringing up. One is the glut of the like on-demand scooter rentals that are all over the place, right? Like, and again, they're, they're like littering the streets. I mean, I don't mean to be dramatic, but it's almost like.
They're falling over.
They're falling over. Yeah, things of that nature. And then the other big thing that, that law enforcement has been talking about is license plate readers within the city to, you know, obviously Boise has a specific, specific position on them. Law enforcement officers in general do enjoy using that information. Talk to me about scooters first.
All right. Yeah, let's start with scooters. So the city of Boise has a contract with one sort of like shared mobility or micro-mobility provider, Lime.
What do you call the micro-mobility?
Micro-mobility.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. So here's the new term. You can add that to your lexicon.
Yeah, right.
Micro-mobility. And so there's this scooter share system and we partner with Lime on this. We have a contract. We used to have a contract with like three different providers. That wasn't working because it was a real mess. Because then you couldn't really communicate with everybody to try to figure out how we're going to address these issues. The scooters, there is something that we can do and there's something that I'm working on right now. So every single one of those scooters is hooked up to the internet. So you can figure out where they're going in real time. And because of that, you also have the ability to geofence where they can be parked and how fast they can go. So if you're on one of those scooters and you're cruising through the center on the Grove, all of a sudden, if you've got that thing maxed out, it's going to slow itself down to about 10 miles per hour as it goes through the Grove. Because we know that that's a congested area where there's going to be problems. There is a lot that we could do as far as geofencing on other congested areas. You can think of like the Boise Greenbelt, areas around downtown, other kind of pathways, places where there's conflicts that are happening with people who are driving too fast. We can geofence that and we can set what the max speed is going to be. It could be 10 miles an hour, it could be 15 miles an hour. And so because we have this contract with only one provider, we have the ability to have conversations with them. And those conversations are in the works right now. The other thing that you'll see in other cities across the country, and really frankly, around the world, is that they have very specific places where they can park those scooters. Right now, they, we have those in Boise. And if you park them in an appropriate area, you're doing really good. And if you don't, you get a fine. And I believe that fine is maybe about 45 cents.
Whole 45 cents.
A whole 45 cents. And so as you can imagine.
If I'm like, peace, son.
As you can imagine, nobody, nobody gives a crap.
Yeah, right.
And so they'll leave them wherever. Um, so what other cities have really done is they've tried to delineate where they can be parked and they simply won't lock. They will not turn off until you put them into the appropriate area. So part of the problem when you have these new technologies like micro mobility or e-bikes is that. There's, the technology is moving faster than the policy is and the regulations. And so you have all these cities kind of saying. Well, we like these because maybe it reduces the amount of vehicles that are on the road. Um, so it helps with some congestion there and people really like it because they can park their car once when they get downtown. And then they can use the scooters or the bike share to get to wherever they need to go. But it's also a mess at the same time. So how can we, uh, get policy back in line with technology? And, and we are behind. And so that's what we need to figure out right now is how can we actually match policy with what the design behavior? Or what we would like that behavior to be. And so I think that those are two things that we can do is we can figure out how can we govern those speeds? Um, how can we make sure that these are parked in the exact right spot and not just give somebody a 45 cent fine, but just. Don't allow it to lock so that it actually starts running up the bill. And if the scooter providers don't like that, then we can shop around for another provider. Or we can say that this actually isn't something that's working. But it's become clear, I think, especially in the last few weeks, we've had a couple of different incidents that have made the news. A biker that got hit by a scooter that was riding on the green belt, went to the hospital.
Oh, that's terrible. I had no idea. That's terrible.
Yeah, there are things that we can do and we're having those conversations right now. In fact, in 2018, I believe the city passed its e-bike ordinance. And this was before I was on city council. I took office in 2020. And at that time, barely anybody was using e-bikes and other types of e-mobility, electric skateboards, one wheeler scooters, they didn't even exist. They were not anywhere here. And so we need to redo that ordinance. So we need to include all different types of. E-mobility. I'm throwing out a lot of like, uh, transportation buzzwords here. But we need to make sure that an ordinance actually addresses all sorts of different types of e-mobility because it's clear that we're having some issues. Um, I don't know that we're ready to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, hey, this, this can't work, but we do need to figure out a way to make it work better for everybody.
Yeah, the, uh, the e-bikes, right? Uh, I had, um, um, a gentleman on, uh, about a month or two ago, I think it was Brad Wilson from Bogus, but. We were talking about the problem with, with e-bikes and it's like that you have these, you know, different tiers and you essentially go all the way up. From, you know, like your Schwinn with a little electric thing on it, all the way to like, no, no, it's a full blown motorcycle.
It's an electric motorcycle at that point.
Right. You're just, and again, like motorcycle, it's not determining, it's not like motorcycle is not reserved just for like ice engines, right? Like you, you can have an electric engine. It's still a motorcycle. It's just an electric motor. And it's so again, technology is changing, obviously figuring out what, what and how and where these things fit within a municipality is, is a struggle that I think everybody's dealing with.
Yeah. And, and we need to be working on those things. There are some vehicles that are on the road right now that people are buying and they're modifying. So they're actually not legal because they're going faster than they're actually allowed to go. Some that are actually, aren't actually allowed on, you know, roads in general that people are using. And so we do need to come up with solutions. I also try to remind myself every once in a while. That sometimes we kind of like to blame these kids and these teenagers, like they're running wild, they're doing all this crazy.
Get these kids off the sidewalk.
And I have to remember that like, when I was a little kid, I was making jumps along the side of the road. I was doing wheelies. I was doing a lot of the same behavior. So I think that sometimes we want to, you know, sort of blame youth for the way that they're using these different things. They're kind of kids being kids and it's the parents who I think really need to jump in there and kind of start talking about. Hey, I don't want you riding 40 miles an hour in the middle of the street and you've, you modified your bike, like you shouldn't be doing this. And so. We sometimes want government to take care of all these issues and not to be sort of responsible on our own. And I think that there's a little bit of that that we have to do as well. But the role that the city can play. Is to make sure that we're educating people on these issues, that we know what the rules are, what classes of e-bikes are allowed, which ones aren't allowed. But then we need, you know, community accountability to be addressing some of these things. And in some cases, we kind of need to let kids be kids a little bit and understand that. They're going to pop some wheelies, they're going to do some jumps, you know. College kids are going to ride around a little crazy every once in a while. And we want to do what we can to address those behaviors and minimize any sort of negative impact. But also we're all human beings and there's only so much that you can do to control everyone. And I don't know that anybody wants this police state where. Every single time somebody does something wrong, like there's somebody immediately there to crack down on them. A surveillance system that maybe you would see in China, like that's not what anybody's looking for here. So that's the scooters. The other thing that you were talking about is some of the license plate readers. So last year, um, I put forward, uh, some policy at the city of Boise that would allow us to use. Red light cameras, um, in areas around school zones. And this was the result of a kid getting hit, Jayden Zarowski. Um, on, uh, 16th street on his way to register to school from Albertson's, hit and killed by a dump truck driver that ran a red light. And so we were wanting to use these red light cameras at some of these intersections around school zones. And how it would work is that if somebody ran a red light, it would take a picture of their license plate. And at the end of the day, a sworn officer would go and they would review all of the footage and they would decide which ones should get tickets and which ones shouldn't get tickets. And so if you just stopped a little bit on the other side of the white line, probably not getting a ticket. If you went through and like, you got through and it changed to red at the last second, you know, you're probably fine there. And if you're egregiously blowing through a red light, you're absolutely going to get a ticket. And so I think that this was lost in some of this legislation is that. This is technology, um, that exists that is being used all sorts of different places. And if you still have a human being. Who is monitoring the footage at the end of the day and dictating whether or not this person ran a red light. That's what we wanted to use those cameras for, where they would be issued a ticket. And that ticket would be used to fund safe routes to school programs, um, to make it safer for kids to walk and bike to school. So it's not to like. Pat anybody's coffers. It's not, you know, nobody's getting a bonus. Nobody's getting, you know, these incentives or whatever it may be. It's simply a sworn officer reviewing footage because we do have, um, a growing city. We've got more complex crimes. We've got more people driving. And we have limited resources as far as the officers that can be out there doing traffic enforcement all the time. And so if a traffic officer can issue. 30 tickets in a day to people who are running a red light in a specific area, you know what happens the next day? Those people don't run that red light anymore because they got a ticket. Um, so we put that.
And especially in that area.
Yep.
It's like, look, man, it's not like you ran a red light in like middle of no, like you ran a red light right next to a school zone.
Right next to a school where, where we know that there's people who are crossing on a regular basis and where we know that there are high incidents. Of, uh, conflicts between pedestrians and drivers where there actually are crashes. So we put this forward and then it was taken away by the state this last year. So the state overrid that decision. They made it impossible for, um, for cities to use, uh, cameras and any sort of license plate readers. For anything that's not a misdemeanor. So we can't use it for traffic enforcement. So what we could do is that if a kid does get hit. By somebody who runs a red light, we can issue that person a citation now who hit them, um, because it's more than a misdemeanor. And what we were talking about is like, that doesn't do us any good. We're not trying to stop. We're not trying to like stop the driver that already hit and killed somebody. We're trying to stop people from getting hit and killed in the first place. And so more preventative than reactive.
Right. The other one would only be effective if it were a hit and run, but it wouldn't be effective for a law buying citizen to, as a deterrent.
No. Yeah. And if there's a kid walking across and somebody reds it, runs a red light and it barely misses the kid. Or the kid just gets slightly injured and there's not actually a misdemeanor, um, we can't use it. And so thi- this is a problem. And when we're talking with our different law enforcement officers, they want to be able to use technology, better technology that makes sense. That's existed for a long time, um, to address some of these issues. And it's not every single intersection. We're talking about a few intersections around school zones where we are trying to change some driver behavior. Um, and specifically for, for red lights, but that's red lights and that's kind of off the table. At this point, because of that state legislation. So we do try to come up with these solutions, the problems when. You know, a, a family is heartbroken because their kid was hit, you know, we're working together to figure out what can we do to address this problem? And it is a challenge then when the state comes back and says like, okay, actually, um, we're going to take away your local control on this issue and not allow you to do it. It is something we run into, um, and that just means that we have to keep figuring out ways to move forward, you know, through street design, through. Additional law enforcement that's really, really expensive, um, you know, and, and trying to figure out what are the different things that we can do to address these different types of problems.
Here's a question for you, and please don't take this the wrong way. Um, the individual who proposed or sponsored the bill. To remove Boise's capacity to issue, you know, tickets in this manner. Was that representative or senator from the Boise area?
Uh, from Northern Idaho. Um, and I would say that I'm going to, I'm going to give the legislation, the legislators a little bit of a slack. Because what happens is it's, it's the most bizarre process in the world. If you actually ever go to a public hearing. Is that some legislator has a bill and they say, here's my idea for a bill. They give a two minute presentation. And then they allow some public testimony and everybody votes on it. So there's no experts who are coming in and saying, this is how it would have a financial impact. This is how it would have a safety impact. Here's the studies of what have happened around the country. And so they make these decisions typically along party lines without actually doing a lot of reading. About what the, the implications for something like this might be. And that's exactly what happened. Somebody from Northern Idaho put forward a bill. Got voted on by party lines and there was never actually a conversation where they would say, oh, let's actually have somebody from the Idaho Transportation Department. Come in and talk about, you know, the danger at some of these intersections or let's actually have.
Highway district or.
Yep. And so when we make a decision at the city of Boise, we've got our staff that come in and present. We sometimes bring in outside expertise as well. And we'll have a robust conversation before we pass any sort of ordinance or any sort of law. So that by the time that we do, we're making this really informed decision. Because they meet on a short period of time and because there are so many bills that are going in front of everybody. They don't have that same level of information. So a lot of times there's laws that are passed without people actually knowing what they really are. Or the consequences of those laws. And I think that that's an example of what happened here. And it really took away a significant resource to our law enforcement officers across the state. To be addressing crimes in ways using technology combined with a real person who has real judgment, um, at the same time. And so it's. It, it is a challenge. Um, but also it's, it's a challenge that we know that exists and we have to figure out ways to keep moving forward.
Okay. Uh, first off, thank you for all that. Um. The last piece that we were kind of talking about initially is Boise does do a lot with parks, right? Like that's a big thing. We have the clean water and, and open space, uh, levy that's coming up. That correct me if I'm wrong, but it's for the average household, I think it's $40 over the two-year period.
That's correct.
So it's not $40 a month. It's not $20 a month. It's like $20 a first year, $20 a second year. That raises $11 million collectively. That allows you to purchase and preserve and with an army of volunteers, make better, you know, trail systems, make better, uh, urban wildland interfaces for fire safety. And just ensure that the land surrounding, uh, another wide swath of land surrounding the city of Boise is not captured by developers or things of that nature. Talk to me about what else can be done to continue connecting, I believe it's 74% of young people within the city of Boise are a 10 minute walk away from parks.
And old people as well.
And old people, old people and young people.
Aging people. I think that, yeah, older aging people.
Listen, people are people.
People are people. And so, I mean, I walk to a park, you know, and, and I'm right in the middle. So, you know, I'm 42 years old, I think. And I want to be within 10 minute walking distance of the park, just like everybody else does. So it's kids, it's, it's across the entire age spectrum. A lot of times when we build things, we say eight to 80, you know, sort of these independence areas where people have the ability to go and do these things. So we've worked really, really hard over the last several years to make sure that we're not just building parks in the same spot. Oftentimes what happens is a lot maybe gets donated, um, or it comes available to purchase or an opportunity pops up. And so we develop a park there, um, which has been amazing. We've got amazing parks across the city. But sometimes it ends up being concentrated more in some specific areas. So what the levy funds have done before in the past, in the 2015 levy, and then the proposed one that we're, we're, we're hoping they will do. Is make it possible for us when we're looking for this different land to create more open space and access to parks. That we can figure out where the gaps are, um, across our city. And those gaps might be in West Boise, they might be in Southeast Boise. They kind of might be in Northwest Boise area, but we can figure out like, if we were to purchase this property using these levy funds. And create a park or some sort of open space resource here. How many more people would then fall into this, uh, walking distance within a park goal? So we have this incredible, um, credible system of actually deciding where we can put these parks and making sure that we're doing it in a way that serves every single person in the community. What I love about this new, um, proposed, uh, open space levy, the $11 million over two years. Is it really is things for every single neighborhood. Um, I like to bring up an example of, um. By Capital High School, um, we just used 2015 open space levy funds to create Boise's first linear path. And it's part of our pathways master plan. It's a long path along the, uh, settlers canal. I think it's about a mile or so long and there's different places to sit. There's a view that you can look out and see, but also it's a transportation corridor. And so these levy funds made it possible for everyone who lives in that neighborhood. To not get in their car and go for a drive to go for a walk in the hills. They can actually just go out their back door, hop on the sidewalk, be next to this irrigation canal, these pollinator gardens, this beautiful view. And go for these walks in their own neighborhood. So I think that we have to rethink what open space looks like. Cause in the past, I think we've only thought of open spaces, the foothills. We have to protect the foothills. And we do, we need to continue protecting the foothills for fire reasons, for park reasons, for trails and access and all those things. But we also need to be making sure that we are preserving and creating open space in every single neighborhood, no matter where people live. And between parks and pathways, there's even a reserve, the Hyatt Lakes Reserve, which is kind of back there off of Chindon a little bit. These were all things that have been used with these, uh, levy funds before in the past. That's how they would be used going forward. And I love it. I, I am the representative for District Six, which is basically all of, uh, North and Northwest Boise, everything west of 15th Street. And north of the Boise River. We have a lot of access, you know, to the foothills. We have access to parks in a lot of these areas. And I want to make sure that as a council member, that I certainly am advocating for my district and the needs of my district. But also every single decision I make needs to be what's best for the entire city at the exact same time. And these open space levy funds and the combination of that with our 10 minute walk to a park goal. Really allows us to make sure that we're using these in a strategic way that actually make it better to live, no matter where you are in the city of Boise.
Yeah, I, um, growing up, I actually, the, the city I was growing up in had a, a bike trail that we used, I used to get to swim practice. I'm like. You knew, you just had to ride your bike up a busy street until you hit the bike trail and then you could go east and west forever. Um, and I, I don't, it was right along canal. So I don't know if it was initially a canal system or actually a, 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 a transportation system aside from, you know, pedestrian and cycling. And then the city I was living in before we moved here had the Iron Horse Trail, which was this large, um, uh, old train corridor. That was tracks, right? And they just removed the tracks and it became this massive, like hyper utilized transportation, recreation opportunity where, you know. Again, it, it went from this kind of like, oh, I have train tracks in my backyard to like, oh my gosh, my house backs up to the Iron Horse Trail. And it was a huge, huge boom and for, for transportation and recreation, kids could get themselves to school safely, right? It paralleled really large streets that you could always avoid. So, yeah, like I have a great approval. When you start talking about like, oh yeah, we reclaimed this area or we utilize this area. It's like, I, I lived that through my whole life.
Yeah, I'm so glad that you brought that up because one of the things that, um, that I want to make sure that we talk about when we talk about open space. And one of the things I'm proudest of that I've gotten done on city council, um, is that, uh, I passed the pathways master plan. And I, I think the mayor maybe talked with you about this a little bit as well. So her and I worked together to create 112 miles of a pathways master plan that extends across the entire city. You can kind of think of like the green belt. As sort of like the epicenter and like these different pathways spurring off and it uses irrigation canal easements. So those access roads that run against the side of the irrigation canals, railroad easements, power line easements and other public rides away that we have in the city. So the whole goal behind.
I know what these look like. Like this was my whole childhood.
This was your childhood. Yeah. And so this would make it so that no matter where you live, you would have access to an off-street walking or biking trail. In your own neighborhood that eventually would connect to the green belt. So it does build this huge transportation network. But also it's a recreational network. It's a place where people can go and they can relax. They can walk their dogs. Their kids can go for bike rides without people having to worry about traffic. Um, but this is one of the things that I'm most excited about that I've both done, that's happening right now. And that we have to continue making sure happens in the future. And there are concerns that people have about these pathways of like, oh, it will bring crime into my neighborhood or, you know, I don't want people, you know, in my backyard or, you know, the variety of different things. When I was younger, I grew up, you know, on in Boise and kind of Eagle, we used to water ski in canals behind our trucks.
I've heard this.
We used to do this and like, and it's, it's crazy. I don't know what we were thinking. Our parents would definitely have shut that down if they knew what we were doing. But then you go.
They knew, they had done it too. They knew.
And so you're, you're water skiing in canals. People are dumping trash in canals. People are doing graffiti along canals. All these things are happening. And part of the reason that they're happening is because they're close to the public. So people do bad things in dark places where you can't see them. And what happens when you open things up is that they almost always become safer. There's less drownings because there's more eyes on people who are there. There's less people throwing trash in the river because there's people that are there walking by that would see it happen. There's not people hopping over fences because somebody would see somebody hopping over a fence and pulling, pulling stuff back over. And so we've got data, um, from across Idaho, actually Twin Falls has some great canal pathways. But across the country where when you put in these pathways, it reduces crime, it reduces litter. It actually increases safety. And so there's all sorts of things that you can do, you know, to address a lot of these concerns that people have. And so this is one of the things I'm most excited about because we can think back, you know, years ago and we would say, oh, everybody would have loved the Boise Green Belt. It would have been such a popular project. It was not. People threw tomatoes at city council members in the city council meeting. Because they were so mad about the Boise Green Belt ruining what they thought Boise would be. And now we look back and we say, this is one of the best decisions that we ever made. I think that the pathways plan, I think regional rail, um, those are two things that I think that when we look back, we're going to say. I'm so glad that we started those efforts when we did because they've transformed this community. And if you were going to try to take them away, people would lose. Can you imagine if somebody tried to take away the Boise Green Belt?
No.
No. Um, and so these are things that we can do to make it better to live, no matter where you are in Boise, cheaper to live. Where you're not driving everywhere that you need to go, um, more enjoyable, a higher quality of life. There, there are things that we can do and that we're actively doing right now and things that I want to make sure that I have the ability to carry forward for four more years.
God bless you, sir. Listen. God bless you, sir. Listen, today's a working day for you. You have commitments. Thank you. Thank you so much for making the time for this. Is there anything you'd like to hit here at the end?
I just want to say thank you for having me on here. When we, when I was first elected, I was elected at large. There were no city council districts. So everybody got to vote for everybody. And because of that, there were a lot of public venues where we could talk about issues that we cared about and where we could hear about issues from other people. And that's really good for democracy. And then when we were split into districts, you kind of saw that go away a little bit. Like the West Bench is not going to be interested in hearing what I have to say because I live in District Six in North Boise, even though the decisions that I'm making on council will impact them very, very much. And so there are really positives, I think, about moving into city council districts. But one of the challenges is there's not always a lot of venues anymore to have these types of open discussions. And so I really appreciate you bringing me on here and bringing on any of the elected officials who are running for city council this coming year.
They're, they're all invited, by the way.
Awesome.
Right. Like a hundred percent.
Cause that is good for democracy. People need to know what people think. And as elected officials and candidates, we also need to hear from people as well. There's some negative associations with campaigning and also stuff like that. I, I enjoy it because I get to talk with thousands and thousands of neighbors. And what you end up finding out is that like people have really good ideas. And people know the issues in their neighborhoods well. And so through the process of campaigning, it builds a stronger democracy. And so when, when you invite me on here and when you invite other people on here, it creates a venue for people to have this conversation and dialogue that I think is so desperately needed. And my hope is that it doesn't create more division, that people actually listen to what people say and they say, here are practical solutions to problems that we think would help our city. And here's the person who I think could best make those decisions instead of saying, I like this person because they're part of this party or because they're that party or, you know, I, I don't, I, I try really hard as a city council member to fight that divisiveness. There's another city council member, Lucy Willetts, who's a good friend of mine. Politically, we're probably, you know, on different sides of the spectrum a little bit. And we've probably voted differently on more issues on city council than almost any other two council members in Boise history. And she's a close friend of mine. And we've managed to vote differently to voice our opinions in a way that's dignified, in a way that acknowledges what the other person said and actually kind of helps you grow. Like she's changed my mind about things. I've changed her mind about things. But we've really sort of displayed how we can disagree and still be good adults and part of a team together. And, and that's a good thing to have. So I hope throughout this process, that I have the opportunity to really bring people together. Like I've always tried to do in the nonprofit sector and that we don't get into politics in Boise at any point where it is divisive, where we are fighting, because we are trying to serve our community members and their needs. And we have to be working together to solve those needs instead of working against each other.
God, you're here for that. Awesome. Thank you for what you're doing for the city of Boise and the state. And thanks for coming on.
Yeah, thank you so much.